Good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and get started.
It's just really a textbook.
Welcome to the special workshop for the City Council, March 24th, 2023. Ms. Hilbrick, will you please call Rolf?
Sure. Councilman Deligarza?
He's here. He just stepped out to take a phone call.
Okay. Councilwoman Solis?
Here.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
And Councilman Lockren?
Here.
Mayor Bachnight?
Here.
I believe Mayor Pro Tim Young will be probably just a few minutes late.
Okay. Thank you so much. I don't have an agenda in front of me, but at this time, will everybody please rise for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texans, one state, under God, one
Thank you. All right. I don't have, well, I have a couple of announcements and reminders. So we didn't talk about it this past Tuesday, I don't believe, so I was spaced out. We have a Kids Fest on Saturday, and we have the Art and Music Walk Saturday evening from four to nine. So I encourage anybody that's available to go ahead and attend to that. It's a pretty, it's a really good time. It seems like I had one other announcement or reminder, but I didn't write it down, so I forgot. Are there any items from council? Oh, I remember what my other announcement and reminder is. We will be wrapping this up at 3:00 PM. Okay. I'm going to close items from council and get into Citizens Communications. I don't think we have anybody that turned in any cards to speak, so we will close Citizens Communication. We're going to get into the work session. Mr. ETN is going to help us through all this, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So today, we have a very full agenda for you. The main focus of today's work session is on improving our public utility systems. As you know, for the past three years, under your leadership, we have been working really hard to essentially make improvements to our utility systems, particularly after Winter Storm Uri. We are looking for ways to harden our system to make it more resilient and efficient. So to help us with that, Mayor and Council, we retain several consultants to help us design our utility systems. That include our SCADA, our wastewater plant, our OCRs, and so forth. So today, the consultants are here, and they will provide you an update as to where we are with the design studies and also some initial recommendations. But before we start with the consultants, we have item one on the agenda, where Ken Gill will give us an update on the FY 2326 CIP. The document that he's going to go over, Mayor and Council, is in front of you. It's that, that's the spreadsheet. So Ken, if you don't mind.
Let me make sure I got, oh, wrong one. Okay. Good afternoon, good evening. Greg was supposed to be here with our staff, Greg Rodriguez, but he is literally in, not in labor, his wife is in labor today, so he had to skip out. Good excuse, I guess. Go over the projects real quick. North Heights Phase Seven, which is an oasis street, 80% complete. They got about three more blocks before they finish all the base work, and then they'll start paving. Real close on that one. Residential street maintenance projects, those are the Seal Coat projects in the neighborhoods. They've got all the point repairs done, and they're looking at starting the Seal Coat early spring of this year, which would be right around the corner, April, May. Dairy Road, the contract is executed. We've had the pre-construction, and they plan to set barricades, from what I understand, as early as the week after next. We'll be setting up some message boards next week. Crestwood Phase Two, complete. 16-inch high service, they got the final tie-in, that's over on Main Street, first week in April, and that one's about 75% complete. Laurent Street Waterline Replacement, the project's let, and we'll bring that to council on the April 14th, April 4th meeting for award. The CDBG Pump Stations, the wet wells are complete, which is a good thing. They got those in during the dry weather. They've got the duct billed flap gates delivered, and they'll be installing those summer of 2023, and expect completion winter. They're, they're working, and they're on track. LED Phase Two to begin in April this year, that's the middle to northern section of town with AEP. Main Street Sewer, that's the one where they keep closing that one lane. They're about 85% complete. They've done all the main work, now they're needing to tie in the services, so they'll still be working in that general area. Tanglewood Project let and awarded to J&amp;R. Execution underway and expect to start late spring. They're getting their materials in order. College Park Project let, awarded to Mercer Construction. Same thing, contract execution, and expect to start late spring. Bon Air, if you'll remember, that was originally let over budget. We're revising some of the design to not incorporate a full-blown grid system, and it's still perfectly functionable and resilient, so we're redesigning that to get that within the budget. John Stockbauer Mill and Overlay, and I'm going to put both of these together, the Rio Grande, basically the airline contractor plans to start as early as next week. The milling process, and they'll have that project done probably within a month or two. They're going to move real quick. Nursery Drive, complete. Public Safety Building, the schematic design is complete, and RFP for construction manager at risk is out, and we'll have a further update in April. Longtree Acres Drainage Outfall, we're still working on design. Urbans about 70% complete. Leary Lane Sidewalk, complete, and I just want to point out that that project and that sidewalk was and is heavily used. It's incredible. The contractor had more thanks from the kids that walked up and down there, so it was a project that was well-needed and well-used. It, it's been a great one. Traffic Signal on Water Street and Moody, they're waiting on a controller and the final hookup. They've got all the lights up, and I expect that in April. Ben Wilson Corridor Project, contractors completed utilities on the east side. He's paving, operations is underway, paving by end of April, and then they'll start driveways, sidewalks on that side, and flip traffic. They're looking in around May, June to flip traffic to put it on the good, the concrete side.
What contractor is that?
That is Main Lane out of Houston. They've done some work here in the past, emergency sewer work, large contractor. They've done a lot of this kind of work where they combine street work with towers, specialized sidewalks, so they're familiar with this kind of work.
Are, are, is there any effort to keep them on our bidders list?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we've called them, like I said, they did, they've done two emergency works for us when we had a big sewer collapse, and we will always call them, we call them periodically, and we reached out to them on this job. Regional Wastewater Evaluation, 90% complete, you'll hear about that today. Skated Design, 90%. Again, we'll hear about that today. Fire Station Remodel, be complete, and Fire Department moved in by end of April. Duck Pond, the excavation's complete, the walls are complete, and perimeter sidewalk nearly complete, it's about 75%. Water Replacement Program, we're coordinating with Aquametrics, which is the supplier. Crestwood Phase Three, they started on the Main Street side with the storm sewer, and right off the bat, conflict with the gas line that we knew was there, but we didn't know the depth, but it's dead square in the middle of the storm sewer. They have to relocate. That's probably going to be about a two-month delay to get them out of the way. So that's part, that's where it's very difficult when you're under these streets with existing, they've been there a long time, nobody really knows where everything is exactly, and you see all the barricades, and nobody's working, we've got to get the gas line out of the way. Spring Creek Reconstruction, we designed it, proposal sent out, plan to award on the April 4th meeting. Wagner Way Extension is under design. I know that they've met with Texas Concrete and expect to design by end of April, and we're securing the right of way. Country Club Sewer Line Replacement, we're doing that in-house, it's under design and plan to let in late spring. Deleon Plaza, we're at about 75% complete, expecting 100% by end of April, first part of May, and right now, we're value engineering that to get that price meeting within the $5 million budget. Willherd Road, it's complete with the exception of the final grade four Seal Coat, and then Onyx went real smooth, locked it in and knocked it out, so that, that one's close, and they'll follow that one with the Seal Coat project that, with Castle Hills and the rest, that's why it's out there. Riverside Dog Park Dirt Work and Site Work Underway, they've got a lot of the dirt work done, they've got some sidewalk formed up, and they're, they're moving forward. Facilities Master Plan is about 80% complete and expect a presentation in April, May. Operation and Maintenance Manual for Water Plant, it's underway, and they're about 80% complete, and we'll have that May, June of 2023. And then the ASR Project is submitted for potential grant funding. And I'll entertain any questions on any of the projects or future projects.
I do have a, a quick question, more comment on the Leary Lane Sidewalk, and you've said what a successful project that was. I believe some of the businesses in the area did donate some of the land, which allowed us to come in way under what we had originally budgeted, and I wanted to take a moment to recognize them and thank them.
I, I agree. It, it was a cooperative project, like you said, all the property owners were very cooperative. They let us, you know, if we needed to weave around something, they were great, and let us work out there, and it, it's a very successful project.
I'm glad we finally got it done.
Yes. It's been a while.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thirty years. Anyway, the next one up, I'm going to introduce Greg Swoboda.
Well, Ken, before, before you go with the first consultant, I just wanted to take this time, Mayor and Council, to, to let you know that with the CIP, our goal is always to have the projects come on time and within budget, and we could not have done it, we couldn't do it without the work of the staff. We have a great staff with Ken and the, and the engineering staff, and we have Gilbert, our CFO, who really takes a careful look at each of the projects. So again, our goal is to make sure that the projects are done on time and within budget, and, and thank you to the staff for doing that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to introduce Greg Swoboda with Garver Engineering. He's been working on this and his staff diligently on the regional wastewater evaluation. As you well know, it was originally a GBRA plant. We took it over in Gilbert, mid-'90s, mid-'90s, so it's our plant. A lot of stuff wasn't done when it was GBRA because they were trying to save money, and we're looking at, Garver did the whole evaluation of the whole plant inside the operations process, and I'm going to turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, Ken, and thank you, Mayor, City Council, and city staff for the opportunity to, to be here this afternoon to discuss the work that we've been doing in regards to the regional wastewater treatment plant over the last probably about six months or so. Again, my name's Greg Swoboda, I served as a project manager for Garver for the project. I also have with me here today Chris Ackerman, who served as a project engineer on the project for Garver, and then Brian Chong, who is a lead electrical intervention control SCADA person for Garver. So the purpose of the meeting is to review the regional wastewater treatment plant evaluation that we've been conducting. Today, we'll cover the review, the project background, review the project progress, review the implementation plan, project development process, review the implementation plan, project list, cost, and then address any questions or comments that you may have. If you have any questions or comments during the presentation, please, please bring them up. So Garver was scoped to evaluate performance at the regional wastewater treatment plant, so some of those items, the scope highlighted areas for specific evaluation, including replacing mechanical aerators with fine bubble diffusers, rehabilitation of the final clarifiers, evaluation of the solid dewatering system, evaluation of a decant line there in the dewatering facility. However, before this evaluation had begun, the city indicated that in previous years, the city had been budgeting funds in regards to the rehabilitation of the screening facility and final clarifiers at the regional wastewater treatment plant. The rehabilitation of the screening facility and clarifiers was paused until this treatment plant evaluation was concluded, and after discussions with the city staff, the decision was made to perform a full facility planning study to help identify opportunities to potentially improve plant efficiency, as Ken has alluded to. So first, we will discuss the project progress thus far. So the regional wastewater treatment plant has historically processed approximately 74% of the city's wastewater flows, so the wastewater flow that's generated here in the city of Victoria. The treatment plant has a TCQ discharge permit and annual average flow permit for 9.6 MGD, which is 9.6 million gallons per day, is what the MGD stands for. It has a peak two-hour flow rate of 25 MGD. Again, that's permitted through the TCQ. The plant was originally constructed in the 1970s with expansions that have taken place in subsequent years. The regional wastewater treatment plant reseeds and processes sludge solids from the Odom Street Wastewater Treatment Plant, and the city plans to continue that operation going forward. So that's just an important note here as we kind of talk through the, the presentation today. And to date, we have developed three technical memorandums, which we'll kind of quickly talk about each one of those memorandums in the presentation today. So on the screen here, well, okay, right here is where the wastewater flow comes into the plant in the top right-hand corner there. So the wastewater flow is coming into the plant in, in the mechanical screen area, and then it flows to that raw sewage pump station. From that raw sewage pump station, it flows by, it is pumped, excuse me, to what is called, there we go, thank you, primary treatment structure, where there is grit removal that takes place at that facility. From the primary treatment structure, it flows by gravity to the aeration basins, where the biological treatment takes place at the treatment plant. From the aeration basin, flows by gravity to the final clarifiers, where you have the settling of solids, removal of solids from the process flow. From the final clarifier flows by gravity to the chlorine contact basins, where disinfection takes place, and then from the chlorine contact basin, it either flows by gravity or is pumped out to the river. The solids component of that is pumped to the sludge holding tank, and then eventually dewatered there at the sludge dewatering building. I skipped one step in there, I'll say, at the chlorine contact basins, I mentioned that's where the disinfection takes place, and that, that, those chemicals are stored there at that chemical storage area, as noted there in the upper left-hand corner, so. All right. The existing condition technical memorandum, TM1, was the first step in the evaluation. So what were the objectives of that initial TM is to review the flow and loadings based on the historical data from the wastewater treatment plant, perform a redundancy and capacity evaluation for the treatment plant, perform a condition assessment, so basically assessing your existing facilities and equipment there at the treatment plant, discuss automation and energy optimization opportunities, review current and future regulatory requirements, and develop future low and flow requirements for the treatment plant. So as noted there, in TM1, we conducted with-staff interviews, condition assessments of the existing facilities and equipment there at the treatment plant. This form here that you see on the right-hand form is the document that was utilized for documenting the condition of the treatment plant and the facilities. This form is a Water Environment Research Foundation form, so it's a standard form, it's not a Garver proprietary type form, that was utilized in determining the condition of the existing facility. So as previously mentioned, the wastewater treatment plant was constructed in the 1970s, and aging infrastructure and condition of the regional wastewater treatment plant's infrastructure was noted as a concern. As some of you may know, a wastewater treatment plant is a very corrosive environment where this actual treatment process is taking place. One of the areas with non-functioning equipment is the screening facility and final clarifiers, kind of going back to the city had began planning, budgeting for some of these improvements going back several years. What we have here on the table below is when some of this equipment, this is just kind of a snapshot of some of the equipment and process areas there at the treatment facility, when this was originally installed, and then the last recorded maintenance that was done to some of this equipment. So what you will notice here is that a number of these recent improvements have really been addressing safety concerns at the treatment plant, but has not really delved down into the actual process equipment itself as far as rehabilitation or replacement of that The wastewater treatment plant evaluation technical memorandum, TM2, focused on evaluating the hydraulic and process capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. The TM2 objectives was develop a whole-plant process model, taking into account TCQ criteria, that's the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, the governing agency, as far as the state is concerned, develop a whole-plant hydraulic model, again, taking into account TCQ criteria, as well as, some of you have probably heard about the update to the flood plane information, take into account the Atlas 14 flood information that is recently is new information as far as flood plane datum. Also perform an electrical and a control evaluation, and then document the hydraulic and process improvements recommendations. So in order to conduct these evaluations, a GPS process model, GPSX process model, and a visual hydraulics model was used to evaluate the capacity of the treatment plant. So in a treatment plant, you have two components of it. You have the process side of it, being able to treat the actual wastewater, kind of the biological side of the treatment process, and then you have the hydraulic side of the treatment plant, being able to actually flow, get the flow through the plant, get the wastewater through the treatment plant. So GPSX is a standard model, again, it's not a proprietary model to, to Garver, same thing with visual hydraulics, it's a standard market, or standard model that's out available on the market. If the city wished to purchase those models, the city could, could do that and run these models themselves. There are several different types of models out there, but this is what was selected for this project. This, what you see here on the right-hand side are a couple of snapshots from both the GPSX modeling, as well as the visual hydraulics modeling for the valuation that was done for the Victoria regional plant. So the GPSX process model was used to confirm the treatment capacities in TM1. The goals of the process model, check that the model can adequately predict effluent quality at existing conditions, so it's basically taking that model and checking it against what the parameters are within the treatment plant, to check the model against actual field conditions, check the treatment capacities at the permitted annual average flow of 9.6 MGD, and if deficiencies are found, model improvements that reliably can meet the discharge permit as required by TCQ, and then provide a mass balance for, for sizing the solid So below are some of the findings and recommendations from the process model. In regards to the aeration basins, our loading projections show that the aeration basin's volume is sufficient to meet the max month loading through the year 2058. So from a volume standpoint, you have adequate volume in your aeration basins for treatment through the year 2058. However, the existing mechanical aerators are not sufficient for the max month BOD load currently at the treatment plant. So the improvement of the aeration system is by upsizing the surface aerators, by replacing some of your surface aerators, or installing a diffused air system in order to meet the TCQ requirement of maintaining a minimum DO concentration of 2.0 milligrams per liter in the aeration basins. In regards to the final clarifiers, what, an improvement that's recommended is the construction of a fifth 75-foot diameter clarifier to meet, again, TCQ requirements. A couple of those requirements that are currently not in compliance, is looking at the surface overflow rate of the clarifier itself. So what you see here in the, kind of the first sub-bullet there, the surface overflow rate, the SOR, according to TCQ, should be less than 1,200 gallons per day per square foot, and currently, your plant would be operating at 1,415 gallons per day per square foot in a peak flow condition. Same thing in regards to the hydraulic detention time. TCQ requires a hydraulic retention time of greater than 1.8 hours, and currently, your system has a detention time of 1.5 hours.
It's one thing, remember, it's two hour old.
Correct. Yeah, so the, the plant is rated, your permit is rated on a, or has a permit for an average flow, which is the 9.6 MGD that was noted, and then it also has a peak flow that you're allowed to flow through that plant, which is the 25 MGD that Ken is alluding to, so. Hydraulic models were developed in visual hydraulics for the existing wastewater treatment plant at both the permitted and peak two-flow. The primary goals of the hydraulic model is determine if the plant can accommodate the two, the two, the peak two-hour flow, the P2HF, as noted there, per the TCQ permit requirements, verify that there's adequate driving head and flow division through the treatment process, and then confirm the plant can function without overflowing during these peak flow events. So this here, hydraulic model results for the existing wastewater treatment plant, basically the findings of that is that the model shows that you can adequately gravity flow through the treatment plant, once you get past the, the raw sewage pump station. As noted earlier, the raw sewage pump station takes that raw sewage and pumps it up into your primary treatment structure, and that the existing effluent pumps at the treatment plant have the capacity to discharge flow during the peak two-hour flow and 100-year storm event, so. So next, we will review the improvements plan, project lists, scoring procedure, project details, and costs. The Improvements Project Planning Technical Memorandum, TM3, summarizes the improvements needed at the regional wastewater treatment plant. The TM3 objectives, develop project information forms for each project. As part of that, we will develop an opinion of probable costs for that project or projects, and develop site layouts. We also We also developed a prioritized project list based on criticality, and we're going to walk through these projects that we have recommended to the city as part of this evaluation. The document that you see on the right-hand side is a snapshot of the forms that are developed for each of these projects that we'll kind of walk through here shortly. So a weighted scoring of each driver was used to evaluate each improvement plan project and establish criticality for each of the projects. So what you see here on the right-hand side is the scoring components and the project drivers, or a driver, what the drivers for the project could be. The six drivers that were determined based on coordination with the city were safety, regulatory, operation maintainability, sustainability, capacity, and customer impacts. That all equated to a weighted score of 100%. So what you see here on the bottom of the screen is an actual example of walking through that scoring for each of the projects. So we have the weighted score that you see there in the column under weighting, which is just a reflection of what we just discussed on the previous slide. And then we actually scored each of the facilities or each of the projects, gave them a score. The scores were generally from 1 to 10, so 10 being that it was more of an immediate need, 1 being that it's less of an immediate need. In a couple of the categories, we actually utilized scores that were higher than 10 to really identify that as being a critical need for the wastewater treatment plant. So the example that you see here on the screen is for what eventually you'll see is called project number two. It's the new primary clarifier, excuse me, new final clarifier. And based on the scoring that was done in conjunction with city staff, this project score had a criticality score of 535 based on that weighting and scoring that was noted. And as you can see here, under scoring component, item number two and number one, or I should say number one and number two, those received high scores because, as noted, the compliance issue in regards to the TCEQ requirement. So the table below summarizes the results of the improvements planned projects prior to realization. So we just talked through an example in regards to project number two, the new final clarifier. These were the other eight projects that were developed as part of the evaluation of the wastewater treatment plant. We've broken it down into these eight projects. They are just listed here in regards to the criticality for the projects, but that does not mean that's the order that they have to be done, and that's, that would be left to the city and city staff in regard to determine what project should be done at what point in time. All right, so we'll kind of walk through each of these projects, each of the eight projects. Project number one is the headwork screening and final clarifier improvements. And if you recall here, it was the number one project with the highest criticality score. This consists of construction of a new screening facility. It also addresses the grit unit. The grit unit removes fine particles from the treatment process. These fine particles being like sand being removed from the process. That helps in regards to that sand-type particles. If they're not removed, they eventually deposit themselves in the aeration basins, as well as wear and tear because of their bracing on equipment downstream. This also includes the rehabilitation of the existing final clarifiers. So what does this mean? The addition of screening upstream of the raw water pump station will reduce the ragging at the raw sewage pump station, which is a significant issue for the city plant staff currently of having to derag the existing pumps, as well as that will reduce their maintenance time to address that. And I already talked about the last bullet here, which is in regard to the grit removal and what happens with the grit that gets deposited in the aeration basins and then the wear and tear on equipment downstream. So what you see here on the left-hand side is a graphic of the layout of these facilities. So this right here is the new screening facility that is being recommended. This here is the rehabilitation, replacement of the grit removal unit, and then this is the rehabilitation of your existing four final clarifiers. Project number one could be segmented into several phases. We have shown here what could be considered that phasing in regards to phase one potentially being the new influence screening first, then phase two, a primary treatment structure, the grit removal component, and then phase three, the final clarifier rehabilitation. That just gives you some flexibility in regards to how you, as a city, may want to move forward with this particular project and the cost of the project. Project number two is the new final clarifier. So again, that's addressing TCEQ requirements and being in compliance. Just to note here, in regards to this, the last bullet here is that, which I think will be talked a little bit about later today, is that in regards to the I&amp;I work that the city currently has ongoing, depending on the results of that work, it could delay the need or the implementation of this project depending on the results of that I&amp;I work that you have ongoing. So on the left-hand side of the screen, basically this just shows where this new final clarifier would likely be located, which is basically in line with your existing final clarifiers at the treatment facility. Project number three is aerated sludge holding tank and dewatering improvements. So as I noted early in the presentation, all of your solids, your sludge are handled here at the regional wastewater treatment plant. So the solid and sludge that come from the, that are generated at the Odom wastewater treatment plant are pumped to this facility here. And so what this does, or what we're recommending, is that you look at expanding the tankage volume that's available to you for sludge storage. What does that do? That gives you, or gives your plant staff flexibility in their operations and provides resiliency into the operation of your system. What that would do is basically provide your staff with about three days of sludge storage, so gives them a little more flexibility in the operation of the solid handling there at the treatment plant. Additionally, we are recommending that coarse bubble diffusers and blowers be provided as well to address odors that are generated as part of the sludge handling component of a treatment plant. Another part, that's part of this project, and so right here is your existing sludge storage tank. Again, it's an existing facility that would be modified for the improvements I just talked about. And then this building right here is your dewatering building, where actually the dewatering of the solids takes place. Another component of this project is that currently the drain line from this dewatering facility that drains, takes the dewatered, or takes the centrate off from the dewatering process is undersized, and so this project includes upsizing that drain line to properly handle those flows. All right. Project number four, aeration improvements, phase one. So projects four, five, and six are very similar, so I'm going to kind of talk about them all at once here. And I say that they're similar because this is all dealing with your aeration basins, and you would not be able to take your aeration basins out of service all at one time. So this is showing them phasing, basically as project four, five, and six, as I noted. What we are recommending is that you replace two of your smaller 30 horsepower surface mechanical aerators with 60 horsepower units to provide you with the adequate DO that I talked about in regards to the TCEQ requirements. We also are recommending that two-speed units be put into place to give you control over the speed that's being utilized, therefore controlling the energy that's utilized as part of these units. Again, DO control to help with the control of those units. So this project here, four, is basically showing, taking the, what, the top two aeration basins and modifying those in regards to the improvements. The project five would then take the middle two aeration basins, and then eventually project six would take the last two aeration basin units. Now, again, doesn't have to be done in that order. That would be up to you and city staff in the order in which that would be done. Project number seven is chemical storage area improvements, and this is the adding additional chlorine and sulfur dioxide storage there at the treatment plant to give redundant storage capability. It was noted during the project that city staff has had difficulty in supply chain issues, probably as most of us have now recently gotten more accustomed to. Disinfection is a requirement of the treatment process. These are the chemicals that are utilized for disinfection, and so in order to ensure city staff of having adequate chemical storage, we are recommending that additional storage be provided at these, at this chemical storage area. And then finally, the project number eight, we are recommending a new administration building. Here in the second bullet, we have noted what potentially would be included in this new administration building. The new administration building would provide the staff at the site a more, a facility that where all staff comes together, can operate, where they've got offices, they've got lab, they've got their control room, as well as men's and women's locker room. In addition to providing them with a improved facility and improved operations, it would, could serve as an emergency location where they can stay when you have a significant storm event. This plant basically is surrounded, it's, can't get to it, and so this building would give them a place where they could stay when they're not able to get in or out of the facility during a major storm event. So the table below summarizes the capital cost for the recommended improvement plan projects. Basically, the eight projects that we just talked about. The total 2023 capital cost budget is $29 million. And so as we talked a little bit about earlier in regards to potentially, potentially phasing project number one, if that was to be done, and kind of that phasing that we showed here today. The first phase, which would be the new influence screen for project one, is about $6.1 million. Project two, which is the grit removal system, is approximately $3.2 million. And then project three, or phase three of project one, would be the final clarifier rehabilitation. There, that cost is about $6.2 million. Again, the total dollar amount does not change, still approximately that $29 million in capital I think that generally brings me to the conclusion of my presentation. I will say that $29 million is, can feel like a pretty high number, but I think, I've been doing this for a number of years. That's all I've done is water and wastewater work. On recent projects that we're working on, you have, as I noted, a 9.6 MGD facility currently that you have on the ground here. Well, just, let's just call it for ease of discussion sake, that it's a 10 million, a 10 million gallon per day facility. If you were to go and build that 10 million gallon per day facility today, that probably costs you in the neighborhood of $200 to $300 million to build this treatment facility today. So just to give some kind of perspective of what the, what the costs are for facilities that are being, being put in, put on the ground today. So with that, I'll open up to any other questions or comments that you may have.
What's the capacity of Odom Street?
I think it's 4 MGD.
4 million gallons on Odom Street.
Four.
Yeah.
Half the size.
What, I'm just going to make a quick couple, final, final comments. Operationally, at Regional, we're running about 4.4 MGD, and at Odom, it's 1 to 2 MGD. The whole plan, when we built Odom, was, we built half of that plant. So at some point, instead of expanding, which we're not doing as part of this study, we don't want to expand Regional. It's in a, it's in a rough location. The future would be to expand Odom Street. Still send the sludge, the sludge down to Regional, but the plan was always to expand Odom Street. We've got a whole nother location for the aeration basin and Clearwell, the whole thing's ready. It's a modernized plant, it's more efficient. So that was part of that whole plan. During rain events at GBRA, if you, if you go to the plant, you'll see there's basins, like open basins around the outside perimeter of the plant. When we get those hard rains, that water comes in, wastewater comes in with its I&amp;I, we fill up the plant with storm water and wastewater, basically everything that's coming in. Once the rain goes down, then we treat that effluent. We pump it all down, it goes back through the full treatment facility. So at times during a rain, we may not be treating 4.4, we may go up to that 8 million gallons, 9 million gallons that day, treat it, get that water out of there, wait for the next rain event. One of the big things was the clarifiers. Greg showed that, that also can be phased. So you have the headworks part, you have the grit chamber, and then the clarifiers, there's four of them. You can, you can individually phase that out further if you need to. We can't take all the clarifiers down at once, so they'd be phased out. Another thing we're doing is the aerators. As those motors go out now, we are replacing them with the 60 horsepower two-speed variable frequency motors. So we're already, as that occurs, if one of those motors goes out, we're, we're switching it to the 60 horsepower. So a lot of these things, we're doing ahead of time as we need to see fit, but give you the safety of, we're not running that plant at 9.6 all the time. It's running 4.4.
Gilbert, did you have a question?
I have a question.
Yes, Jan. Sorry, Ms. Scott.
Trying to grasp the whole concept of the two plants, because the Regional treats 74%. Odom Street's got capacity, plus it was intended to have more capacity, or we could expand it. Are they connected? Or does the 74% bypass Odom?
No. It's two, two separate lines. One line goes to Odom Street, and then other lines go to Regional. Part of that, when we increase Odom Street, we'd have to do some transfer of our trunk collection system to get it to Odom Street. And that was always in the plan, is which lines can we pull and get to Odom Street?
I'm just, I mean, I'm sure we all want to know, is this all optional? Does Odom have the capacity? I think it's what the mayor was getting at too, and you pretty much answered it, but I just.
Yes, and Odom is more of a future growth. As Victoria grows, that's, that's the added capacity where we can get that growth and meet the TCEQ. It's, you've, you've got normal operations, we're meeting it, our effluent's good, it's meeting all the requirements, the permitted requirements, and then you have TCEQ who says, hey, I want you to do this much more, just because. And that's what, that's what every city, every plant struggles with, is we're meeting it, but they want you to do this much more, just because.
Thank you.
Yeah. Make sure I understand. Assume we have the clarifiers pulled right now, things working. This plant's a 9.6 capacity.
Correct.
But we average much less than.
We average 4.4 every day.
One time we get to a situation where we have rainfall, and that kind blows the whole gig up, because now we have a possible corrosion condition to the TCEQ. But take that piece out, from a real perspective, we're still below.
Correct. We, we are below what we're seeing, and in fact, in fact, what we've seen over the years is our actual wastewater treatment at Regional has decreased. And that can be, we fixed some of the lines, and that's going to come next. If we reduce that I&amp;I, we might get down from 4.4 average, Gilbert, quit that, to 3.8. And that's, all of these mixed together. And that's, all of these mixed together, and that's, that's the point of bringing all of these studies together at one time. And I think it was a great idea to bring them together in one shot.
What, if, if all these projects were completed, what type of life would we add to regional wastewater?
I'm gonna let Greg answer that.
You're, you're probably adding about 10 to 20 years of life to the project, and primarily, it's really the equipment, right, that has the mechanical wear, again, talking about a little bit about the grit, right, in the, in the system and so forth. So, i- if you're maintaining the equipment, you should probably get a minimum of 10 years out of it. Some of it, you get 20 years, like the clarifiers, you should get 20 years plus, once you go in there and replace those components of the, of the unit itself. Generally speaking, the concrete structures are in good shape, it's the equipment that really needs to be looked at and addressed. There are some minor concrete issues to be addressed, but nothing of significance that would say, hey, this is really falling apart, so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on these projects, if we plan to expand Odom later on, these projects have to be done in order to first come up with TCEQ requirements? And, so this project you're saying have to be done, even though we plan to expand Odom?
Well, so, there are a couple of items, right, that we noted that you're not in compliance with, with TCEQ, right?
Okay, I saw that.
So, TCEQ could come down on you, the city, the staff, or whatever, say, hey, you're not in compliance, you gotta get this up to date, right? So, they could do that at, at any time. I don't believe that has happened as of yet, so. But it's, you know, my job, our job, to note that to you, right, that, that is what's out there in your existing plant. A lot of what we are talking about today is going in and rehabbing and rehabilitating your existing equipment within the system that you, that you've got. Probably the only system that is not necessarily the case is the new influence screening structure because of the conditions and so forth that your existing screening, that the condition of your existing screening system out at the plant. So, so most of it is just going into your existing systems and making some modifications. And does that answer your question, or?
Well, you know, because $29 million today, and then having to spend the expansion in Odom, which is probably going to be about that much or more, I was just thinking, how much of this is absolutely necessary before we can start with Odom, or we're not planning on doing expansion of Odom for years to come?
Odom's not planned until the city sees the growth and the need for that extra flow coming in. We, we got plenty of capacity right now as we exist. Odom Street is, that was a future, future, let's get the property, let's, let's put it out there so we know if we need to add one in 20, 30 years, we've got the space. So we, we meet everything now.
It'll all be based on population and residential growth. So as we see more growth in Victoria with regards to population, residential development, then we would consider adding to Odom.
And again, it, it all goes back, if you can reduce that two-hour peak flow, and, you know, my belief is, you reduce that by reducing that inflow and infiltration on that two-hour peak flow, that, that gives us even more life out of Regional Plant. It's, it's been there 30 years, it's worked, it's working great, and it's meeting the TCEQ requirements, and our belief is that we will continue to meet that. It's just some of the mechanics that are 30, 40 years old, need some upgrading.
Please talk about some of my presentation information, because I've gone through this information digestively. It's a trip.
Does it have a mic?
Say we have a project.
Do you have a mic?
Base. If we go in there, we do $6 million, okay? Think about this, we get Odom on the side. And at the same time, we go look at the I and I study, which we're gonna do some repairs on that when we get to study. Combine those two together, you have taken the majority of your problem away. Okay? That's what you need to put. I'm doing my presentation now. There's a lot of things happening. You know, just, let's look at it, look at the data, and then we need to step back and dissect slowly. If you do this and this, all this I should have, we're gonna do right away. Does that make sense?
That's what I was asking.
If it comes to TCEQ, it should goes away.
So can you re-point out the items that are maintenance that really have to happen regardless?
I'm gonna go with the project one is truly, I mean, it's a maintenance thing. Some of the clarifiers, the structures are old, if, if it, the paddles, mechanical part brakes, we're having to have it handmade. Literally, you go out and here's what we need you to build and manufacture. Aeration, you know, we're replacing those, when motor goes out at 30 horsepower, we're doing the 60. That's it, that's emergency purchase, we budget, we buy 60, and we're there. Yes, there's other things that can be done out there as part of Greg's study, but we're, we're getting to the point where we're seeing that study, we're saying, oh, he's already saying 60, why put in the 30? And then do it again. Let's go ahead and put the 60 in now.
Right, right, I understand.
So, does, does project one, if we did just that one project, does that fix or address the TCEQ issue?
Technically, no. That's where the I and I's part comes in. If we can show that we've reduced that two-hour peak flow, and that's where you have to sit in front of TCEQ, and you have to market your study, and you have to show them. And that's, that's the toughest part, is getting in front of TCEQ to show them. But so far, they haven't, you know, we haven't been written up, there you go, written up for any of those things yet. We, we have been doing a great job of monitoring during those wet weather flows, being able to hold that in the plant.
Can I ask how long has it been written up?
Ah, it's, I don't know that, I don't know that we have.
Oh no, we're throwing the word out there, TCEQ.
It, the, the last time was that last rain we had in '21. TCEQ came down hard on us pretty good, because we had overflows. We fixed that one, there was a separated pipe by Jim Branch Creek, that sufficed. It also helped that we're following through with an I and I study. So they're looking at that, and they're, they're gonna be, they got their eyes on us to make sure that we follow through with some of those projects, the I and I. You know, what are you doing to improve your efflu, your treatment process? They're looking at that. They're not looking at it specifically, they only look at it when you have an issue. If, if, for instance, it doesn't rain for the next five years, we don't have an issue. It's, it's unique, but that's TCEQ's philosophy.
Thank you.
Ken, looking at the report and the findings, they said the final clarifiers are the ones, the two items of the TCEQ that we're not in compliance, so wouldn't project one, phase three, done first, take care of those two?
It's project two. It's a new clarifier, and that's to, that's to meet that two-hour peak flow. That's, we gotta keep remembering that. That's just a two-hour peak flow requirement.
Okay.
But if we reduce our peak flow by fixing our I and I issues, we don't need a clarifier?
We may not, we may be able to push that back. Exactly.
Okay. So we wait till the next report, and then we figure it out. Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Schloboda. Very thorough, great questions from everybody. We're gonna have to move on to the next one. Mr. Chong?
Brian's gonna do the SCADA design, and just to let you know, this is the actual design of the project. It's not a study, where they've already done a study. This is the actual design to where they've got the, the plans and specs ready to rock and roll, and he's gonna, gonna go over what we, what he designed. Brian, take it over.
Thank you, Ken. May I counsel? Thank you for the opportunity to help design the SCADA project for your city. So the purpose of this presentation is to review the SCADA design, improvement project finding and recommendation. So, we'd like to go through by review the existing SCADA conditions, and then we'll discuss the proposed design, and then we're going to discuss the proposed hardware that we are proposing to replace, and review the OPCC and schedule. And after that, we can have open discussion or question. So, what you're looking at, this is the existing SCADA network that is currently out there right now. The SCADA supervisory control and data acquisition is a powerful computer system that can help you to process, collect, and also review the data in the real, real time. So, I just want to point out, this is your existing SCADA, and as you notice, everything is going back to Plan Three. The, the four highlighted square represent those four major plants that you have. And this up here is the highlight of the, the risk that could have if Plan Three is out. This is three locations that could cause a major risk, that your whole system could be down if those three area is, lost communications or something happened to that area. Here is the, your current condition of exactly what's out there right now. Some of the communications line from the lift stations to the water well right now is not showing up on your SCADA, so the operator have to go there every day just to, to review it and work on it. Here is the, the, the HMI screen as an example of what the operator is looking at. The red line you see from the Plan Three to each of the locations turn red, that means your communication's down, so it's not there anymore. And your current SCADA HMI software right now is from GE Ifix. So next, I'd like to go look at the proposed design that we have. So as we go through, looking at your existing network, we did a radio pass study, and this is what I'm finding that can help you more, have a better reliable system. So we propose to have a new 5.8 gigahertz radio as a backbone to your system, and some of the existing tower, Plan Three, service water, and public works have the facility, I mean, existing structure that have the height for it, so we're going, we use that to, that way we minimize the cost for the design, for the construction. This is, this is the, the water network communications. So we propose to separate your water and your wastewater as a two separate network system. And here is the wastewater SCADA network system. As you can see, the green light is the 5.8 gigahertz that we're proposing as a backbone using radio, and your orange line is your fiber optic currently out there right now. And the blue line is the 900 megahertz that we are proposing that go to other remote site for communication. And as you combine both of them together, this is your future network system that, that you can have. If any of those link is out, the backbone, the 5.8 can take over, so that, that way your whole system can maintain and be reliable. And same with your fiber. So this is your proposed software, is VT SCADA. The reason why we proposed this is because VT SCADA is a one software that had everything in it. And up here, I'm showing is a, is a server, redundancy server system. As you can see, we have, we done server, and then we have a firewall, and then we're shown that it's going, we have a remote server outside of the firewall, which this helped, we can put it in the public works building, so that way the, the city, the outside of the water and wastewater operator, it can make, can see and monitor the, the whole system. One thing I'd like to point out is that because of VT SCADA, you can have multiple server, and basically, basically it's doing is, have redundancy backing up any of those server, if one of the servers out, you still have the, the other server to maintain your system as running. So VT SCADA software is highly customizable and easy to use to meet the city need. The reason we selected VT SCADA, because of the easy operation of it. So, the VT SCADA is available as a fully integrated SCADA system with a single install. So, and then also is easy to navigate and easy to have interface. The old system you have is a GE Ifix. If you want to add any new hardware, or you want to change the HMI, you have to call in a specialist to come in to help you with that. But with VT SCADA, everything is built in, so if your operator have a little training, they can actually customize and add in the equipment or, and modify the software yourself. So it helps your operator to maintain it a lot easier. And because of that, it's more cost effective. On the bottom, on the bottom screen right there, it show the example of, of the map of all, so this, this help represent you to monitor all your, all your site. So as you bring up the screen, you can see all your lift station, your water plant, your water well, wherever facility you have will be shown on the map, it's all connected. And as you click on the, the icon on that map, it take you straight to your, your water plant that you want to look at, and you can see through HMI that way. The next 15 slide is basically just proposed hardware that we, we, we looked at it and we recommend what to replace. So for your service water plant, we look at your, inside the electrical room, you have the POC, and half of your, most of your POC is pretty old and outdated, and we are replacing with the, the G, the Squaredy Snyder POC, because that way, currently, some of your facility have that POC already. So we just recommend using the same lines, so that we all be all the same equipment. And at the service water, the server room, because we're using VT SCADA, we are recommending adding a server there. So your existing server, we're gonna be replaced with new server with new rack. Same with the water treatment plant. This Plan Three is very critical to our design, because, because the location of it and the, the height of it with the existing antenna, the, this is your main working server that we propose to have it there, because all the communication is actually going back to, to this plant. And basically come down to, everything that's there is going to be replaced with the new hardware that we identify. And all the I, Rio panel that's in the chemical building there, we are replacing, at this location, we're just replacing with a new POC Monicon for that location. I'm just going through pretty fast, because this is just all hardware replacement. And this is Royal Water Pump Station. Here, we identified the existing panel is, is still in good shape. The only thing that's needed was just a POC replacement, so that's all we can do, is replace the POC and the radio. And at the River Pump Station, same thing, the existing control panel is out in the sun pretty long, and the equipment inside is all rusted, and what we propose is putting a new panel with every new equipment in, in this location, with a sun shield around it, so that way it help maintain your control panel with a longer life. And your tower, we identified that some of the tower panel is pretty old, we're gonna replace all new tower, I mean, all new panel with a new POC and a radio. For your water well, most of them are pretty old, and the design itself is all individual part, so what we're gonna do, combine all them together and put it in one panel, and that way you can have, just everything is, is enclosed and is controlled with a control environment. And your regional water treatment plant, we identified that the workstation there is outdated, so we're going to put in new workstation, new server, so that way the operator can outdated, so we're going to put in new workstation, new server, so that way the operator can, can see everything at the water treatment plant. And we identified that the antenna tower need to be replaced is pretty old. And for the Odom Water Treatment Plant, your existing panel is in good condition, the only thing we need to do is just replace the POC, and of course, update your workstation. And all your lift stations, we identified that some of them have new POC, so we're going to leave it the way it is, but just update the UPS. And some of them that doesn't have the new POC, we'll replace it with new POC. So the benefit of hardware improvement is that to standardize the equipment, make it easier for you guys to maintain and with fewer spare part. And then with the mesh network design that we have right now with a 5.8 radio and existing fiber optic, the SCADA is more reliable. If one point go down, the communication simply just reroute to another point. So there's a mesh design to that. And of course, one of the benefit is the new SCADA system allowed the city EOC to monitor the water and wastewater system via PN through their portable devices. That could be a computer or your phone. And with the new SCADA system, the operator can have better visibility and control of the city critical water and wastewater operation in real time. So everything that is, have a problem, they will see it right away. And for the OPCC, we estimated that the water itself will be cost about 3.7 million, and the wastewater will be 2.3 million, so your total will be about 6 million. The reason for the water to be higher because of the software, we had to purchase that, and the cost is the programmer, that's why it's a little bit higher than the wastewater. And for your, for construction timing, we estimate to be 18 months to do this, because right now, the POC lead time is almost about 10 to 11 months just to get it. So that's, that's a long lead for, for equipment. That's all I have.
I have a question on the redundancy for communications. And Slide 73 kind of laid out the backbone, which was the green line of, was it 58? 5.8 gigahertz? How does this become redundant? So like, if you're at Tower 6, there's only the connection of 5.8 gigahertz, so what if you lose that communication? Am I not thinking of this correctly? How does the equipment at Tower 6 talk to anything if the 5.8 gigahertz is lost?
You're, at the tower, you have 900 megahertz and a 5.8.
Okay, so this graphic doesn't show you that?
It shows you one.
Where is Tower 6?
Tower 6, the top left there.
Tower 6, as you know, that's two line. There's one goes to the right and one go down, so you have two 5.8 radio there.
But what if you lose your 5.8 radio?
If you, if you lose one of them, the other one will travel the other way until you fix it. You're assuming that both radio will go out at the same time. That's, that's the thought.
I'm just saying, if all the 5.8 gigahertz is down, what happens? Or is that just not likely?
It's not likely all the radio will be down at the same time. There's, there's a, there's a downtime maybe, because the equipment is usually, if one go down, the other will stay on for a while, for a while.
Do you mean it's not likely like during Hurricane Harvey with the redundancy of, at the water plant?
I was just thinking along the, yes, exactly, but I was thinking that you would see at least two colored lines at each point, either being a fiber or a radio system, or two radio systems, but the same frequency of radio? You're saying that doesn't matter? Am I not understanding the system?
What we were trying to do was get two frequencies. If you lock it all in one, and you're locked to that one, the more we have, we have fiber, 900, 5.8. That was, he's a pathway study, they spent a lot of time working on figuring out how to get redundancy without just overkill. And it was the point of, we could overkill this thing, and like, okay, we've got to work it to where it's a reasonable system, but we have redundancy with 5.8, 900, and fiber.
You're correct. On the Tower 6 is only 5.8 there, because Tower 6 is only have Tower 6. That's the reason why we didn't put a 900 megahertz with it. Our assumption is that the radio 5.8 will not go down at the same time. This are, this are the way the radio is designed.
But then you pick up some of these other ones, the lift stations, so you could lose communications with those, and you don't have any redundancy, right?
If you notice, everything on there is all of 900 and fiber optics with all of them, except for the tower. Most of them will have that communication already.
So Texan lift station down on the bottom there, it only has 900 megahertz, there's no fiber.
Correct, because it's just a lift station, we didn't see the need for, for to have redundancy there, because it's, if, if it's go down, they can replace the radio within a day or two.
It, it just got down to cost. I mean, you can redundancy, you put four fiber radios out there, it's just, that 3.7 turns into 5.5.
So there's a balance between our design is cost where redundancy, we identify what is critical, and those point is where we have multiple redundancy at that locations. Mostly all your plant have that. But with your lift station, if you notice that, I mean, airport lift station only have one, 902, yeah.
Yeah, most of the lift stations look like they just have one.
Correct.
They're so remote, they're just out there.
Okay. Jeff, are you suggesting that we look into it further, or something like? You know, I'm just nervous about redundancy after going through Harvey, so. I mean, and I can have a conversation offline with Ken, just to see if, you know, I want to make sure I understand the equipment and what the need is, if you do lose it, communication, you know, so I can get into that in further detail in the weeds with, with him.
Yeah, I think that's fair, so we'll get together with you, Mr. Mayor.
That'll work. And a lot of that, again, is going through, we're trying to get the critical facilities redundant. The lift stations, those, you know, yes, we lose it, but we still can do the field check, and we can still go out there, we can replace that radio. But we want that redundancy at Water Plant 3, at Water Plant 5, at the surface water plant, at the main plants, and that, some of that we don't have.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready for the next one, or do you want to take a break?
Yes, sir, we are. Thank you, Mr. Chung. I and I.
I and I. Jose Maldonado with RJN is going to do the quick presentation. This is the inflow and infiltration study, it's a tech, it's a phase one, and they've done, he's going to kind of go over where they're at right now, and when they're expected to be complete. So I'll turn it over to Jose.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for having us, and thank you for the lunch today, that was great. Really good. So yeah, thank you for having us. Again, we're going to provide a status of where our project is at this point. So just a quick overview of what our project is, it's kind of a three-pronged approach that we have. We're currently been working on the flow monitoring and I and I analysis, along with the model, and the SS, SSES is going to follow, which is the, really to focus in on where your issues are going to go. So kind of go over the, where we're at in each one of them. So starting out with the flow monitoring, just some quick numbers for what your system is and what we, what we did for the study. So you have about a 350 miles of gravity sewer pipe in the system, so obviously that's the key point here, is that it's a big system, really can't replace it all, you know, so we want to focus in on where we need to target our resources and our money. The way that we target is, is we broke up the system into 31 meter bases, and I'll show how we split up a little bit later, and also put in some rain gauges throughout the system to let us know what the weather is doing. Thank you. How the weather is affecting our flows, and making sure that we take that into account, so we can project what those peak rain events are going to do. So roughly, we have about the basin size of about 60,000 feet. This gives us a good number, when we prioritize areas, we don't make it too large, and we can really focus in and hone in on those issues. Our metering period was from the end of August to right before that things can be break, which obviously, on these type of studies, we, we need a little luck for it to work, because we want to make sure that we capture rain, so we can know what the system is doing, not just dry period. Actually, want to mix of both, dry periods and wet periods. And we were fortunate to get some rain towards the beginning and towards the end, and a lot of dry in the middle, but it gave us enough where we can do some projections. So this is a layout, obviously, it's going to be hard to see everything that you have here in your system broken out. It is a little puzzle that you have, not so easy to follow when you first look at it, but like you said, we have the nuances of having the regional plant at the bottom, Odom plant that intercepts some of the flow, like here, you know, you have a lot of things going in, and somehow there's a lift station and oop, sends it over here. But it can also go further down to the wastewater plant, at the regional plant, so it's a little tricky system, so you know, I've enjoyed working with this one, because it challenged us on figuring out some, how the system works, and obviously, the city staff was very helpful on figuring that out. And this is a little more zoomed in area, as you can see, it gets a little further crazy as you start looking into the downtown area, how we have everything connected. So how our process works, so we installed the meters at those 31 locations that we mentioned, and this is kind of what it looks like here. The meters are put in the manholes, we have sensors that are put into the pipe, and really what they're doing is just collecting data of how much flow is going through your system at those locations. We collect that data, it's sent in to the cloud every 24 hours, so we receive it, and then we can start analyzing that data, and it comes into our clarity system, and that's where we do a review, edit when needed, and also lets us know when are there issues that we need to go maintenance the meters, because obviously, this is things that can break, or there's issues that are out there, dirt that gets in them, we just need to maintain them, we came out here to maintain them as needed, or calibrate additional if things got a little out of whack.
How many manholes did we?
We had 31 locations, 31 locations. So you'll see this graphic show up a little bit later on here, just to explain what the flow components are in our system. You know, again, we're focusing on I and I, but there is other, obviously, you're going to have the, the base flows that are coming into the system, just, oops, wrong one, just your regular flows, but the blue ones here are the ones that are going to be coming in, it's pretty much most of what's underground, it's happening, a lot of times are right after a rain, which we're considering the infiltration, and that's going to be happening on cracked pipes, cracked manholes, things that are in general are underground. The inflow is really more what you're going to be seeing from right after a rain event coming directly into manholes, as you see here, or into the private cleanouts when those are broken, or things like that, that can get you the big numbers. I mean, this graph kind of gives you an idea, infiltration is going to be a small portion of it, but the big one is when you get these, these peaks, like the two-hour peak that Greg mentioned earlier, those are the ones that you really get concerned about and really hurt your system, because in general, when you have average flows, your system is designed to handle it, but those big peaks are, are making it a lot more difficult, especially when it, if it goes even beyond that 25 million, that's just the plant, you also have the gravity pipes that we want to prevent the flows from coming out of your manholes. On dry weather, this one is really more information that we are also using for our model, which I'll talk to a little later, is what is the characteristics of the flows in each area. Not every one of them is going to be the same, you know, some are going to be primarily residential, some are going to be commercial, some are going to be industrial, some are going to be a mix, so we're going to make sure that we capture all that information into our model, so we can project what's going on a little bit better in the model. As you can see, this is one of the basins kind of in the middle of town, and you know, we look at on the, what, what happens on the weekdays, what happens on weekends, because the patterns can definitely be different. As you can see here, you know, weekends, the water usage that happens on the weekends is definitely a lot more during the day than when people are at work, you know, it's a lot less than when they're away from home. So all that information is put into, or is used for our model. So getting into the part that y'all are really more focused on, what is our infiltration and inflow into the system? So again, getting back into our graphic, you know, again, focusing on those blue lines, this is a overall summary of all the basins that we had in our system, and you'll see the percentages there, that's a total percentage of, of the total that we have. But the more important thing I want to point out is this threshold, you know, we definitely want to be smart with our money, and the threshold there kind of tells you, well, in general, you're always going to have some form of infiltration that you're not going to be able to get rid of. And you know, trying to tackle this 1% is, may not be smart, because you're going to be spending millions and millions to save a drop of water of getting into your system. You know, the ones that you want to focus on are the ones that are above that threshold, which, this is a national threshold that's kind of used for this type of work, you'll see the same thing on the inflow. But in general, you see that really besides one basin, which is this one here, Basin 15, almost all of your other ones were within your threshold as far as what is acceptable and mean, and not excessive of infiltration. So that's a good thing, you know, that's kind of listed out, some of the subdivisions are in that area, but in general, that's, that's a good thing. When we get to the inflow section, it's quite a bit different story. Again, mark the threshold line, and as you can see, majority of your basins are above that threshold on. You have some that are hovering right above it, but then you see some, some like this that, you know, you take those two combined, or three combined, they, they almost add up to more than the rest of your system combined as far as excessive numbers. So this, I mean, that is the purpose of a flow monitor, you want to get something like this, because it really tells you where you can really focus, the low-hanging fruit that you can really get to without exerting too much, too much cost, and you know, these show up really well. You know, once you get to the middle, obviously, there's decisions that need to be made sometimes, we can work with staff on, hey, the numbers only tell us a certain story, but staff may tell us slightly different, maybe this one, they have more issues on, you know, that's a little bit more, but it's hard to ignore numbers like this. Harder to follow here, you know, this is the results of all three of them, I'm going to go through one by one as far as what priority one, two, and three are. I might mentioned before that the whole process is really trying to get down to a project level eventually, you know, we're trying to get from 350 miles, you know, down to 36, I mean, this is priority one, and really, after we finish the SSES, we're not going to be doing 56 miles, maybe it's going to be, you know, a handful of miles and some manholes and so on, but that's, that's the purpose, is really furthering, going down that funnel and trying to reduce what, what that project is going to be. So I show here on the table, I mean, this is all of the priorities, again, just slightly different colors, and this study year one, it was, it worked out fairly well as far as the budget that we had in this contract, and, and these numbers working out fairly well. You know, we had a budget of 290,000 feet for smoke testing, we're pretty close to that number, and we had a few more manholes, so these are numbers I think we can work with in moving on to the next phase and tackling this project. So the cost there that you see, that's, that is the, the study cost, so from there, we're going to find out more what, what is going to be the next projects, that could be capital projects that you could focus in on. So just to point out numbers, like I mentioned, for this project, it represents 45% of your excessive flow, and that is just on the very first one. You know, I guess the returns become less, but you know, this is the type of information you want to see, because it definitely gets you a lot of, off the ground quickly. And more importantly, this is something that we have programmed in on this, on this project already, and we can move on, and you know, we'll talk to a little bit, but as, you know, we're looking to move on to next month, or next week, actually. Won't go into too much details on this one, but very similar, when we go into the year two, it represents about 26%, and then year three, 22%, and that's where we, again, we start getting to the smaller percentages of the, what is identified as excessive, but we're still beyond that. It's definitely, again, like we mentioned earlier in the other presentations, this is really important, not just for regulation, but it can- important, not just for regulation, but it can delay other projects like plant improvements and so on, that could save you a lot of money. And, you know, just for the health of the public, obviously, avoiding overflows. Then I'll talk a little bit about the model as far as where we're at. As I mentioned, on the I and I, we are complete on that portion for the model. So the purpose of the model is really to get our 350 miles of collection system into a computerized system where we can see what our system is doing. So we are complete with that. That did take, took, taking the GIS information, bring it, and our model is a GIS-based system, so it made it a lot easier. But understanding the GIS, asking questions, working with staff to making sure, you know, there were some questions that were there, how do things connect, make sure we got that correct. We also identified key manholes to get GPS information, really to know, obviously, the GIS has, we know mostly where the manholes are. But one thing we don't know and is not available is what's the elevation of these manholes? You know, is, we have drawings, but are all fairly relative, but we don't know what the true elevation is to make sure that we connect the model together. So obviously, we can't do the entire city, or I wouldn't be here. We would still be doing that probably towards the beginning. So we selected key ones, worked with ASBIL's information that was available to, you know, connect the gaps. You know, we may have one manhole here, another manhole here, and the other ones, we just make it work, again, try and make sure that we have key things like here, where is there a transition to a major pipe or flow diversion to get that information. Then, in the end, we want to get something like this. I mean, it's simple. A civil engineer can be real simple, make sure that our pipes are flowing downhill, you know, as simple as that. And the other critical thing is using LiDAR information, is what is the top ground elevation? Because you can see things like this, if you're seeing flow is really high, overflowing these manholes, it may be fine over here, but you have a low point here. This may tell us flow may come out of that manhole. And this is some of the results that you'll see from our model. The other part, besides building and connecting everything, is getting in what are the projected flows. So that's, we've done it, we do it different ways. For residential, we use parcel information and census information as part of population to load those parcels or properties. This is something that Ken, I think, really enjoys because it's just big data that we're able to bring into this model. You know, there's so much detail that we can bring in, and we're able to run this model, not like before, this kind of information we couldn't do, or else the model would take days to run, not the same anymore. So we can get to that level. Before, we may do something more like this entire section of a subdivision is going to be one point. Now, every home is a point of data that gets loaded in. So again, a lot of information. And for the non-residential, we use the water meter records that the city's provided us to give us an idea of what that usage is, because it's not as easy to predict without knowing what's actually going on. But all that information, we loaded it into our model, and that also portion is also So what we're working on now, and we started, is the calibration. And this is where the flow monitoring is important, because we are, we're making assumptions, right? When we're loading data from the sensors and properties, it is estimations. So we definitely like to get some kind of confirmation that we're close, and in some places, we can be really close, some places maybe a little high, little low, that we tweak the model to fit really what's going on in your system as best as possible. So again, we use the models, look at the dry weather flows coming in, look at the wet weathers coming in, so making sure that our lines match up as well as they can so we can predict. The other thing is, once we have that information, is we want to look at what is our capacity of our pipes. You know, we know how much flow is coming in, know how big the pipes are, does it fit? And that's really what it's going to tell us. So we're going to be determining that. The other thing is the level of service. How much do you want to keep that sewer inside the pipe or covering the pipe? Those are things that we have discussions more with staff, you know, where you want to keep it. Obviously, we want to keep it from getting out of your system. That's very much easy to understand. But what is that level of service? That can depend. And also, obviously, looking at the rain events, where we have, we can have bottlenecks when the big rain happens. Again, your system is somewhat complex, so a lot of big pipes kind of spread out and kind of go different directions. So that, you know, one of the things that was talked about earlier about Odom and the regional plant is, how does that split work? And whenever you get to upgrading that plant, this is going to help you to determine how big the next pipe needs to be, or how you need to do the diversion. This model, again, the key thing is, this is a working model. This is not going to just sit and be done. This is going to be a model you're going to be using, upgrading as time comes by. As developments come in, how do you address those? You know, you can add that loading, like, okay, that pipe is big enough, or no, we need to add a new main, larger main. How big is that main? That's going to help your conversations with developers as they come in. Again, we're not quite there yet. We're working on the results, but this is something that you can expect to see. You know, this is your system. Hopefully, you're not going to be seeing all these big rods where, big dots where this is water that may be exiting your system through a manhole or an overflow. Those are the things you want to avoid, but this is going to predict where those problems may be so you can get ahead of them. The other thing is, where are your bottlenecks? You see here, it happens to be the blue lines where you may have some restrictions there, and you may need to do some upgrades to your system. You know, this is a little more define of what a project could look like. You know, this is where we're going to be putting in a new main and to relieve the system. And those are the types of results that you'll get, so you can start plugging those into your CIP and spread those out in time based on the work that you have. And again, it's also, it can be modified for later and maintained as needed. So just a quick overview and let you go into questions, but again, flow monitor, we've completed that portion. Hydraulic modeling, we're expected to be completed about June or so. And SSES, we're actually looking to start hopefully next week, unless y'all have any major issues, and then report to be expecting it right at the beginning of next year. That's my presentation. Well, here's a more detail of the schedule, but over.
Questions? So we've got a long way to go, Mr. Mayor, with this project. Can you go back to the SSES year one slide? Please.
Which slide?
One more. Keep going. This one then, go back.
This one here?
The other one, next one.
Okay.
So, so is this telling me that these subdivisions have a lot of I and I, and that is 45% of the total?
Yes, this is not all of the subdivisions. We just kind of want to list a few for context. But yes, this is where we're seeing where 45% of the I and I we identified happens to be in this area.
In this area. So we have Brownson Edition, Crestwood South.
That's correct.
Is that broken pipes on private property?
Well, that's the one thing we don't know. That's where, what we're going to find out. When we go to these areas and go do our SSES, it's going to include manhole inspections and smoke testing.
Yeah, and what we may find out is, a lot of these are older neighborhoods. They were built, there wasn't a lot of field. In other words, the new neighborhoods, they drain from the back to the front. A lot of these older neighborhoods, they drained from not much at all. Their backyards may hold water. So what those residents may have done is, I got to get that water out of my yard. Easiest way to do it, open up their cleanout, let it drain into the sanitary sewer. I suspect we may find that some of that in these areas. That's what I'm hoping. Another thing, I hate to go in, another thing, what they found in other cities and what we found, is when they do this SSES, what we're hoping not is, oh my gosh, all the lines are bad. What we're hoping to find is, oh, you got a pipe separation right there at Jim Branch Creek, where you got a 60-inch pipe that's got a two-foot gap in it. Fix it, 250,000, that reduces your I and I by 4%, 5%. Get some of those. What they found in Temple and the other cities is, you can really hit some of these big, major ones for relatively low cost, and then work your way up to those bigger projects. But a lot of it's going to be, a lot of public communication and getting the word out to people, help us control the inflow, reduce your sewer bill in the future, because we don't have to make these line improvements or fear of getting fined.
Perfect. Thank you, Ken. Right, and the other thing is, manholes is also something else, right? That's a big source of inflow. As you saw, that's the biggest hole that you guarantee to have, you know, how you can address those, and which ones you need to address to make sure you reduce those numbers, just as Ken was mentioning.
Go ahead.
When you move on with your study, are you going to study the, like, the 45% first?
Yes, yes. The first year that we're focusing on, yes, is going to be these bases that you hear, that you see there, the ones you see on the map. That's going to be the first that we're going to be doing.
That'll be the smoke test.
In this project, yes.
That's in this, this project that we've already awarded to them, correct. The model, I will say this, we added a model. That is going to be a great benefit as we do our wastewater master plan updates, get that in front of Matt, he can look at it. You can look and see, hey, how much growth can we take up Navarro? Are we running out of room in that sewer system? Like Jose said, do we need to reroute? How do we reroute something? The model is, first time I've seen it in my career, it used to be you just did SSES and fix stuff. Well, now we can actually model it and look at it. It's just big innovation.
Yeah, and we got some lines too, that I think we want to say, let's abandon that line.
Oh, yeah.
We have several of those that are already kind of things that we identified, like, let's make sure we can, let's do it, because they're old pipes, and really, they're just allowing water to get into your system. But again, we want to make sure, we don't want to make sure we disconnect the line that's going to create a problem, last thing we want to do, but.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Maldonado.
Maldonado.
I said it wrong.
Maldonado.
Maldonado.
If there's two, Jason and Jose, so then they're not related, so.
And they're not married either.
Next, do we want to keep going or take a break?
Take a break.
Take a break?
Five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Or make it 10-minute break, yep.
Or 10-minute break.
Oh, we got to get 10 minutes.
Okay. We've gone over a little bit. I'm sorry, I didn't hear my alarm go off, but we'll go ahead and start back. We have off-channel reservoir interconnect project update from Mr. Glaze from Urban Engineering. Welcome, Matt.
Forgot we had that one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is an update of the off-channel reservoir interconnect. And so, let's see if we can get this thing going. We started a little background. These are off-channel reservoirs are located across the river from town. The water, they were started in 1999, approximately when they constructed the surface water plant. Waters pumped from the Wallop River to the reservoirs, and then stored in there until it needs to be pumped to the surface water plant. And OCRs consist of 11 abandoned gravel pits and basic, I'm going to go to the next slides. The water's pumped into pond three, and there's an open channel between three and four that connects there, and then from there, it's pumped out of pond eight into the surface water plant from the raw water pump station. And currently, currently, without manually pumping, these three are the only ones connected. I think that's the big point of our study. So the objectives of this study is to connect all the OCRs and make use of the available water, and eliminate the intensive, the labor-intensive portable pumping that they're having to do. That's a picture of the portable pump they're using, and at times, they will pump water out of reservoir, pond four and upon six. So we're going to review the connection plans from previous reports, evaluate its storage volumes, and then updated a connection plan, and then updated the cost estimate. So you'll see, there's a list of the ponds and their total volume, and these are all based on the 2011 bathymetric survey that was performed. We just rechecked those numbers, and they were pretty close. And currently, we're only using water out of three, four, and eight, without manually pumping it back and forth. What we're proposing is to get water from two, more water from three and four, seven and eight. You'll see in the next slide. So we're going to, we're going to connect the ponds with open channels, or propose to connect the ponds with open channels where we can. We're proposing a 20-foot bottom width channel, three-to-one side slopes. And ponds two and three were proposed to connect at elevation 30, three and four at elevation 25, five and six would be elevation 30, six and seven is elevation 25. And that's all based on the depth of the existing ponds. So and we have to cross a couple roads, and in those road crossings, we're proposing to cross with some pipes. And the other thing that, when the raw water pump station was constructed, it was not constructed to make use of the entire depth of these other ponds. The pond eight is a little shallower in that area where they suck water out of. The other thing is, we're not recommending at this time to connect ponds nine, 10, and 11, because the surface elevation of those is different than the other ponds, and there's connected with the creek, so we feel you could lose someone. So this is our proposed connection plan. You'll see that we have this connection here between three and four, and then we would connect it with a channel here up, get close to the Tibbely Road and the lower road, and we would connect pond seven and eight and four that direction. And this is just a section showing the elevations and depths of the ponds. So when we started this, it was like, how hard can that be, right? That was the big key to this. And so we got to looking at the depth of the ponds, well, they're 25 and 30 feet deep. Connect a pond at that depth and reach out and connect. I'm going to go back in a couple slides. To reach out and connect, if you see pond three, that green line, that's elevation 25. That's 125 feet off the bank. So you're going to have to be on a barge to do that work. So that's an increased expense. When you, when you connect the other side, when putting in these pipes, you're down at elevation 25, there's groundwater. These are old abandoned gravel pits. We expect to find that there's a lot of gravel there. So dealing with the surface, groundwater in order to put a man down there, or put the machine and equipment down there to connect these by boring, so you don't have to open cut the lower road, is expensive. And then in addition, when you get over 20 feet, you've got to have special engineered shoring that's required. So we broke this up into phases, and kind of tells you how you can collect the water. So phase one was to connect ponds three and four, that's the elevation 25 connection. That adds an extra 215 acre-feet of available water without pumping. So the current connection is only about eight feet deep. Those ponds are about 25 feet deep. And we estimate that to be about $728,000. Phase two was connections of pond four and eight, and extending the suction on the raw water pump station. And that increases another 279 acre-feet. That makes use of the additional depth of the ponds that are currently connected. And the big connection is to connect the water across the lower road, and that's connecting ponds five, six, and seven. That adds an extra 1,324 acre-feet, and that costs us about $3.6 million. And then the final recommended connection is connecting ponds two and three, and that adds an extra 137 acre-feet, at a little over $1 million.
So it's $13 million.
And then in summary, total project cost is about $12.8 million. And that, and I think one of the big questions is, why are we doing this? What are we looking at? Well, peak day for the City of Victoria is approximately 18 MGD. So how much water is in our ponds? So, how much water is in our ponds and how much water we're looking for? So, without the, without the portable pump, you've got about 12 days of water in there at that 700-and-so acre-feet that we have available today. By making this connection, making these improvements, you're going to get about 42 days at peak day usage.
I got, I got a question on constructability.
Yes, sir.
Between three and four, you're saying something about a barge needed there?
Yes, sir.
Why? Is it...
So, we're proposing to connect this green line to that green line, which is elevation 25, to make use of the additional water in there. That's about 125 feet off the bank and it's about 25 feet of cut.
So, that channel between the two, what's the width end up being there? Between three and four?
That one? The existing channel or the new one?
Well, the new one.
The new one's, it's the 20-foot bottom, three-to-one side slopes.
That puts the top at what?
50.
50?
I don't know the width.
You couldn't dig it from each side?
You can't reach out in the water far enough to get to it. To that, if you're going to connect the 25 contour, you're, that's probably 125 feet off the bank. In order to reach down and get that, that, that Longreach excavator max depth is going to be, sitting on the barge, you've got to figure there about eight feet off the water, six or eight feet off the water, they're only reaching 30 feet deep.
But you couldn't do it from the gra, the ground?
You could do as much as you could from the ground, but you still have to bring the barge in order to connect them at that depth.
Part of it, I think, is that to get to that elevation, you, that, right there where the connection point is, you still got to get out there to get that deep water. There's deeper water out there, so you got to dig all that muck, gravel and stuff out of the water. You can't reach it.
I guess you'd still have to be on a barge, but you wouldn't do it with just like a bucket pull or something like that?
Like a dragline?
Yeah.
Well, I talked to some contractors about a couple of different options on digging this and, and we looked at hydraulically dredging it and we looked at draglines and just the cost of moving that equipment for this. Everybody, all the contractors I talked to recommended using long reaches, putting them on a barge. I mean, when you start bringing that big equipment in, it comes in pieces.
I've seen them, they're not any bigger than a hydraulic excavator, just in the bayous in Louisiana, they use them a lot there, draglines to keep, keep the depth of the channels.
But they still come, I mean, when you get something with a long boom like that, it's, you know, to get that reach, it's coming on pieces. And I think that was the concern with, with the contractors I discussed it with. I talked to some local dredging contractors about, you know, about looking at this and bringing in a hydraulic dredge is one of the thoughts we had too. And with the unknowns and, and a lot of this was, was overburdened. So, when they cut these gravel pits, they were, they were cutting and moving behind them and so we're not real sure what's in there and what they'd find either. But being that they expect to find some gravel, they expected that to cost more and... Yes, Mayor?
Okay, I know nothing about any of this, but you're saying it's open channel, which I guess I hadn't really ever envisioned. Is it not, it makes more sense to me to bury a pipe?
We looked at that and, and we thought about that and, and you're still digging the 25 or 30-foot hole and then when you do that, you have to put someone in the hole to put the pieces of pipe together or you try to open this hole that's a challenge to keep open because it's gravel and it's unstable, so you're bringing in special shoring to do that depth and then you've got a pipe that's buried really deep that is almost impossible, is difficult to maintain and so...
How do, how do the oil fields do directional drilling?
They, they do it, but they also do it under smaller pipes typically and they're shallower. And except for creek crossings and things like that, but I talked to some local drillers and they were scared of it.
And the big thing to remember is, open channels carry the massive volumes of water compared to a pipe. And guess what? We don't have to go out there if the pipe collapses in 20 years. We don't have, now we got to start over and spend another $2 million to fix that pipe. Open channel, you go clean it out. If you keep them out, clean it out and they just, they're, they're more efficient and they just, the volume of water is just vastly incredible.
Just connecting them?
Yep, just connecting them.
So, on the, on the four phases, are they sequentially dependent upon one another?
Yeah, pretty much. And, and you could move pieces of phase two into phase three, we looked at possibly connecting, you know, the big amount of water across the lower road with pond eight, but there's a, a lot of this area in pond eight is really shallow. And so, you still got to go out there and dredge that piece of, dredge that side of pond eight in order to capture that water.
Matt, if, if phase three is getting you more acre-feet of water, why couldn't you do that more first?
Because you got to get the, the water from there over to the other side. And that's the point I wanted to make, is that the big volume, the big, the real heart of this project is the third phase. That's the key. That's what's hurting us. We have to pump that water from five to six, six to seven, over to four, over to eight. We're doing that manually and everybody says, "Well, yeah, that ought to be easy." It sounds easy, but we get one day where it rains, river's not flowing water, now it's muddy, we can't do nothing, we're, we're in a mess. And our pump and our motor that we drop out there, it's only got so much suction head, so we drop that intake pipe into that lake, we can only get so much water out of before that pump doesn't work anymore. So, that's what's hurting us as we get into the drought, we can only get so much water out of five, six and seven. Interconnect, it's just an incredible amount.
I think so.
I think my question was answered because I looked at phase two and seeing the useful volume of 279 acre-feet for 7.5 million.
Well, it includes some pieces that are required, so if you moved it into phase three, if you wanted to just do phase three, then you're going to have to move some of that money into phase three.
Okay.
In order to lower the intake.
Okay.
Connect that deeper dredge part of pond eight. So, so I mean, yes, we could look at it in that way and if that's something we can come back to.
Yes, because right now we're 12 days. And, you know, the, the ultimate goal is 42 days. Without that phase, let's say that phase was not done, do we increase our, do we increase our, our days from 12 to...
Not, not much.
Okay. That's, that's what I wanted to know.
And we're, we're already getting some of that because we're using the pump. Remember that. We still are getting, we're not just at 12 days, we're getting 12 days and we can pump some of that water and move it around. And the flip side is, when we do get rain and we're pumping water into four from the river, we have to turn that pump and reverse it to fill up five, six and seven. Doesn't make sense, but we, we better fill them up because now we got rain, so we reverse it and we're just chasing the water from pond to pond.
I know it's a lot of money. Like I said, when I first started this, how, how hard can it be, right?
Well, it's always been kind of told us, "Two to $3 million."
Well, and, and that's exactly what we were thinking when we started, but when we started looking at some of the specific challenges and saying, "Look, it's 25 feet deep. What size excavator digs 25 feet deep?" And then what, what are they going to find when they get there and talking to some people that had, had been around when they dug some of those pits and looked at some local borrow pits in the area when they were digging and they said, "Once you get to about 15 feet and hit that gravel layer, it's just, it's just marbles." And so, what, what are, what are you up against? And so, we anticipated all that and that cost.
Okay. So, the deeper the pond, the more expensive, I suspect.
Yes, sir. And, you know, we didn't look at, connecting them shallower, but that's kind of already, you know, there's a significant amount of water in your existing ponds that you're not able to get to just because of the depth of the current ponds. It's like, once you bring the equipment out, let's go ahead and get it all. And that was the discussion that Ken and I had.
By lowering those connects from eight feet to 25 feet, that'll get you more flow, right?
That allows, allows the city to use more of the water in the pond.
Okay.
And it's, it also makes operations easier so they're not having to pump it across the road.
Right, understand.
All right. Well, thanks for that sobering report, Matt.
Sorry about that.
Appreciate you taking a look at it.
And now that the technical extravaganza is over, now we're in for the financial extravaganza.
Do we have cartoons?
Yeah, fine, yeah. Our projects don't happen unless their part happens.
You're going to tell us how we're going to make it all work.
Okay, take it away, Laura.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we just wanted to go over the budget process calendar for fiscal year '24. As you can see, all of y'all know that the budget process is very intensive, as such, we start early in the year. This year in January, we released the budget module in OpenGov. Just as a reminder, this is our third year utilizing that software. I like it, so I hope everyone else is enjoying it as well. It's a lot easier than Excel. In February, we met with the executive team to go over the budget submission process and our calendar with the budget submissions due to us at the beginning of March. And today, we're here going over the CIP update and Gilbert will kind of go speak in further detail once I go through our proposed calendar for fiscal year '24. In April, the executive, the executive teams, we meet individually with a city manager and the finance budget team to go over budgets and stories. So, that will be happening in the month of April and there is also another CIP update scheduled for a regular council meeting. In May, we plan to have mock presentations, that's something for staff, it's very beneficial for the departments to hear other departments go over their stories, their budgets, just to get an idea of what we're doing for, or requesting for fiscal year '24. That happens in May and as well, there is another CIP update at a regular council meeting again. In June, we do have another set of mock presentations, just kind of polishing everything, getting the stories ready for our June workshops. Right now, that's tentatively scheduled for an all-day on June 30th, so that'll be nice to get it all done in one day as opposed to evenings, late evenings. Again, that, that leads us into August when we deliver the proposed budget to council, usually that first meeting in August. We will have the first vote on the budget and tax rate towards the end of August with the final vote on the budget, ratifying our tax rate and voting on the tax rate in September, which will allow us to have our budget effective October 1. Are there any questions over the calendar itself for fiscal year '24?
When do you start getting numbers from CAD? And have you had discussions yet with the new interim director?
First question, usually they send something out in April and I assume they can put your name to it, ignore it, it's a bunch of numbers that don't make any sense to them either. I plan to sit with them by mid-April to kind of go over our process because John and I had a process, because I do get these reports starting in May on a weekly basis, not only the current future tax row plus the previous tax row because what was certified in July of last year has changed. So, I hope I answered your question. No, I have not talked to them, but April should be the numbers coming out, they're going to send those numbers out like a courtesy, which doesn't mean nothing, but I plan to have a conversation towards the end of April to set up meetings to talk early May.
Okay. Thank you.
There any other questions regarding the calendar? I'm going to hand it over to Gilbert for a...
One thing that's on that calendar, right, in June, it's on there, all-day budget workshop, right? Long day, we'll take a couple...
So, July is the only free month, right?
We've talked about, last year, we had three days. And one of the conversations with this, nobody else, why don't we try to get it all in one day if that's the intent? And I assume it was and now we can break it down.
Yes, two-day, one day.
One day or two.
One day, all day.
One day was a second alternate. One day.
Yeah, one day.
All right.
Sold.
Sorry, Ashley. My lapel pin, I missed it. Take away next step. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I just want to kind of bring it back together because I was, you know, I noticed at the beginning of the meeting, I was like, whoa, all these things going on and consultants have their vision, how to do their job and do a great job. Then it comes to a point where I will have to sit down, kind of translate that information into more of a financial plan. So, you know, at first, I don't know, about an hour ago, that was me, information hitting me. And, you know, I know we're filling all this data coming to us, but we got to just take, we always take a step back, chill out and we figure out a plan and action because we've been doing this for a long time. Y'all folks been doing CIP plan, it's not our first rodeo, so take a deep breath, we step back and boom, we might come an idea. The first idea may not be great, but it's an idea and then we go back and do the drawing board, okay? So, basically, what we're going to do after today, we, our teams go back together and first and first most is we're going to sit back and look at our current CIP that we have out now. What I mean now is the one we have set up and passed a year ago. Okay, remember that? And not only that, remember December, we came to you and we changed some projects around. Wagner Way, all that's still in play, has not gone away, have not been bid and you've got all these other places that we've kind of moved off a little bit and that needs to be refined in '24. Need to look at the costs, need to look at the dollars, okay? So, all that needs to be done. So, I want to go in there, kind of like scrub it, make sure we got a good, good starting point. Then we take today's information, analyze it, dissect it and see how this thing's going to fit into moving forward in our CIP. We're still going to keep a three-year window, so we're looking, our CIP program will be the '24, '25 and '26 coming up. Just for giggles, I do have two other years added to my plan because I have to figure out what's also out there. The reason I do that, because we're talking about debt capacity, remember? I need to know where I stand, just in case I use this up, I'm not going to worry about these other projects beyond this window. So, anyway, we still have a three-year window. One of the takeaways I took in looking at this data, and I really got this data, I believe, Wednesday or last week sometime.
Yep.
Great timing. But I looked at it, it might take away like skate, okay? I'm not going to give you a specific date, but from my perspective and just looking at the CIP, how that's confused, to me, it looks like the water's priority. And then wastewater be my secondary and that, I won't tackle that water first from a financial perspective and then the water's second, wastewater. Does that make sense? Because mostly the whole hardship in the hard, the freeze is on the water side. Stepping back, look at our wastewater treatment plant. Lot of money there, but again, as doing what we're talking about it, there's, there's sections that we can digest, it kind of spread out and I think just for giggles, my, my personal opinion, you look at project one, because that's really the bagging your money right now. If I had the whole $20 million, which I do, you want to sell debt? I have it. But I'll get to that in a minute. But I thought we take project one, we slice it down in three phases, as the gentleman mentioned, but in each phase, you got to think about, you got engineering and construction. There's a timing. So, you go do engineering, project one, phase one, that engineer, let's say, is about $1.5 million, that's going to take you X number of months. You come back to the next year, then you got your construction. You see what I'm saying? So, don't, I need all, you might not, you got to think about the timing of these projects and when they're going to be let out. So, think about that. I need to play that out, it might fit for the next three years, fine, but I'm not guaranteed, but we got to look at those pieces. I and I study, we don't get a report till final report February 24th, which is going to tell me what projects need to be done first within that 45 percentile, 25, whatever that magical section is. So, for right now, I just don't see that in this timeframe. What I see it is hitting the '25, '26, '27 CIP program when I have the data. OCR, I don't know what to tell you. OCR, I don't know what to tell you. I was liking the 3 million dollars. I did not like the 3 million dollars at first. I love the 3 million dollars. And by the way, it's not 12.8. Actually, the left off the, if you add all those up, it becomes 12.87 some change. So the round is 12.9. So anyway, we can talk about that, we have time. And one thing to look at this is like, we gotta figure out, all due respect, where is this overall, from a city perspective overall, what needs to be addressed? From a time cycle, from livability, everything else, quality of life. And that's, you know, that's logical reason to look at things in more layback side, and figure out how things will find, lay out. Because, I'm getting dry here, which means if I wrap up, there's funding dollars I got contend with now. You know, we were lucky in the past years, we had COVID money, we had ARPA money, tax dot, overpass money, but somehow it's still alive, but it's still alive just a tad. But that's going away.
MIT.
Okay?
You got MIT?
The what, sir?
MIT.
Oh, don't, don't, don't steal my thunder here, brother. I, I, I get to that point.
For the Mark money.
And then we got, you know, one thing to keep in mind, you know, it's a challenge moving forwards that, you know, debt capacity on a utility side, not the COGO, went from, you know, from nine down to six, slightly like that. Which generates about 4 million dollars in cash capacity, we haven't, that we've been using, and fortunate applying all over place. That's why we be able to do all these projects right now, because we had the cash, we didn't have to use the debt, right? But what happens a year, two years from now, we just, council does wants to use debt. That means it dries up that well. I was giving you a heads up, it's give or take. Keep that in mind, but I'm trying to make that work. Keep in mind too, that this year, we're gonna have a storm drainage utility study. They will develop the whole scenario as to what would it take to create a fee to address some of the stormwater drainage maintenance issues, which kind of rolls into your I and I and all this other stuff. So that's in the play too, that would also come into play with your possible CIP. Because we won't have to face the facts that when they do the study, they're gonna, we're gonna be presenting y'all a budget and a possible rate structure to fund these operations. Okay? And that's down the road. What I'm saying to all this, there's a lot of moving puzzles, you know, we have all these projects, we do, all these studies need to play into it. But bottom line, that needs to play in with the next couple, three months. And I think I will leave it there. I can go, but I want to get out of here too, so. Any comments, any questions? I didn't mean to blow anybody's mind, just say, this, it's a moving, it's a moving picture. Let's move back, it's gonna be fine. We'll address it slowly, but we address it.
Thank you.
And Mayor, Jesus, I know plans to have more conversations with you, council, as well as in the, in the April meeting as well.
Yes ma'am.
So we're talking about CIP. I know we're talking about water, wastewater, all those issues. This is for you, Mr. Raina.
Raina?
Because roads are still part of the CIP. And I just excuse myself to ask Mr. Gil, there's a road that needs to come to our attention, that needs to get into the CBIP process, and that is Ben Jordan.
Oh, yes.
Between Stockbauer and Sam Houston.
Sam Houston, yeah.
Ben Jordan in front of the new Enchanted Gardens apartments. It's needed attention for a long time, but I just asked, it is not on our five-year window at this point.
No, I mean, there's some big cracks in it, where I don't even know, crack seal will help with it.
At least we're getting some crack seal now, but it, it needs to, it needs to come to our attention, that's part of the purpose of this work session.
Yes, and we...
I'm sorry, and I think that's, that's a primary example, I'm giving that. You might have projects too, you haven't heard about, that we haven't talked about. That might throw a different spin to this whole scenario, how we need to lay it out. That's why it's so important. And I don't know how much times I can tell you this, it's more that those ideas need to be conveyed out to city management, so we can apply that into this whole funding structure, where, how it lays out. It's you and I know, I wish I can do every project that is listed. And this project that we're doing studies right now, we're doing a, 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 those Northside Road.
Yeah.
And we're doing the, that, the other one, Guy Grant?
Well, yeah.
Guy Grant.
Guy Grant.
And Guy Grant. That's not cheap. I can tell you that now. And that's not even the picture. So those are little competitions that we gotta still think about, but again, I'm going back to what I started with. Alright, let me see the picture. Let's sit back and see how this needs to be sliced, and which needs to go first, what needs to go second. So you're right, that's the prime example, but I'm trying to say that through this whole cycle, we need to make sure what hasn't been talked about, or has been talked about, that needs to be brought up to the surface again.
On that point too, Ms. Scott, we're, we looked at widening that road, Ben Jordan, from Sam Houston to Stockbauer, because of the incoming residential development. Because Fox Homes are building more, and then we have the, our property where we sold to a developer who will be building 112 units on the site. So we've looked at widening that road as well. So Ken and I are having that conversation.
Thank you. I know it's got deep ditches, which would be a challenge, but at this point, the road is actually close to being a one-lane road.
Yes.
Because so much of it's failing on the sides.
Yes. You done?
Yes, I'm done.
So I was just gonna go around, you know, I said we'd get out of here at 3, I don't mind getting out earlier, but we don't ever take the opportunity as councils to visit among ourselves, so I was gonna open up items from council again real quick, just to make sure there aren't any items that y'all want to bring up. I think a MIT update from Mr. Lofgren would be nice. Just a quick, kind of, he's worked very hard on that. Ms. Solis is in that too. Appreciate y'all doing that. Waiting for the letter.
It looks like 19.6, but there was some other money that we got a, a second go-around, which would be 210,000. Because 19.6 has not come back, it's not official from the GLO.
It's gotta come back from the GLO, right?
But even if it comes back at 19.6, there will still be money that's not used, that went to other cities, that will come back for a second go-around. So hopefully, we'll get 19.6 and 210, and then some more money down the road.
Is that all at once, or is it over a period of time?
Well, once they allocate it, it's all at once.
It's not like this year, and this year, and this year?
To make clear, Councilman, you mean, once they allocate, they're gonna, might understand that we have to apply to the same... And that's, and glad you brought that up, that I'm glad you did, is that CBG MIT is part of the play, and for my analysis for the next three years. But the question I have, that I gotta play it out and answer, is that there's a timing issue. When are they gonna finalize, here's the number of year you have, we're not gonna change it. But we have a guideline, we got application, we got approval. Which, Gil, it doesn't make sense to me, but if you did it, you did it, but still, they gotta earn their pay up there. But that's a timing thing that I have to also consider. Because as you well know, so far, I'll tell you right now, I have two projects. The Public Safety Building.
Longtree.
And the Longtree, okay? Definitely, I have that marked. And so, that, that's why it's crucial, it's like, okay, the next month, the next seven, eight months, they say, hey, no problem, it's gonna be there. Fine, but what happened to come back and this, like, application's gonna take, it's gonna take you a year and a half, Gil? That's gonna change my whole perspective on my projects.
Also, they haven't exactly said exactly what you can use the money for. Because I have heard that you can't use it for public safety.
We're looking for, no, no, this, this is my angle, and I think we looked it up.
Yep.
I'm sorry, you wanna say something?
No, you can go ahead and explain it.
I'm focusing on, on the 911, which is in our plan of mitigation. Also, the hardening of the building, I'm not touching anything else. Does that make sense? It's more of a mitigation item. It's like, say this whole building needs to be mitigated, I'm taking that cost in. Let's say the section that they're at right now is your 911. Well, I could technically figure what my square footage is for this, for the total cost and just the hardening. That's the number I'm using, nothing else. And I just, Derek and I had a meeting last couple of days, and I asked engineers to have a separate board to identify those costs that's in this total number.
Another thing, and it has to do with Ben Jordan. At Ben Jordan and Sam Houston, and I know that Ben Jordan needs work. There's also a drainage problem at that, I mean, there's a big drainage problem. When it rains heavy, that whole intersection floods. So before we...
How fast does it drain?
Not real fast, not real fast. And I, my concern is, if before we do something to, I, I understand Ben Jordan further down, but if, when we get to that intersection, we better be looking at the drainage before we start just redoing the road there, and then we don't solve, we have more of a problem.
Yep.
Or we don't solve the problem, so. It does, it doesn't drain off. It's only when it rains really heavy.
You know, I was gonna say on that I and I study, I didn't see Ben Jordan, or Ben Wilson on there, you know, right there for the colleges, where we always have that problem with the water? That wasn't in, in part of the, it was identified as an area that needed to be looked at. Did y'all look at that? Ben Wilson?
But that wasn't...
Because, on the storm, yeah, yeah, because, why does that water get...
Well, we know why it stays there, right? It's undersized piping.
Right, so...
But we're looking for where the streams cross. And how we get, how are we getting stormwater into our sanitary system?
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. That's what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, that's more...
But that also was something that needed to, you know, but they just didn't figure it out, so, okay. I know what you're talking about.
And hopefully, some of that will be alleviated with the new pipe that is being put under Ben Wilson for stormwater retention.
Okay.
It'll double that capacity, right? Somewhere belonging there, so.
Okay.
Mr. De La Garza, you got anything special you'd like to talk about that we don't normally get to? No?
Good for me?
No?
I'm good.
You're good?
I've got one more thing. When I got into office, who was that that was here? Mr... I'm thinking, Sylstex, Sylstex.
Uh, Mr. Blanchard?
No, no, the other guy that was there before. Anyway, he said, Josie, be sure and get a stoplight on the corner of North and Delmar. And I never have brought it up, because it was always something else, something else, but...
The four-way stop there.
Yeah, because, but see, where we've had deaths, or like, one more block down, on the corner of North and Delmar. We've had several deaths there, three that I can think of. And I know Jesus was talking about when they start expanding North Street and Hanselman, that maybe a light there, or a light on North, so somewheres on there, we need to put a light, okay? I don't care where, but as long as we get something either on Delmar somewheres, because that's the main thoroughfare that's gonna be affected, once you open up Hanselman and North, or on the corner right there by the, the four-way stop where the school is at. I don't know if it would be more appropriate there, maybe we could do a study or something and find out.
It'll have to be based on traffic counts.
Right, right, but something around that area. I know that we don't have as much traffic for the school, but we do have the traffic coming in and out from the plants. So I know that there's something that needs to be done there, but I've never brought it up, because it's always been something over there.
I see Mr. Gil taking notes.
We'll, we'll look at it with, with city engineer.
So that's all I have.
Great.
Well, I apologize for jumping in early on Ben Jordan, but it sounded like we were...
It's free for all.
Another one that I have thought about, and I've spoken to Mr. Garza, but, and if we've already talked about it, I apologize, but Guy Grant, which we all know, needs lots of work. But pretty much, we're designing, and I think we're designing several different things. We are certainly designing what I would refer to as the Taj Mahal, that's gonna be very cost eye-opening. And that would be, you know, full with underground curb and gutter. But I've continued to ask, can we design and can we get a price for repaving the street the way, in the configuration that it's in right now? Because people tell me that there are a lot of kids that walk on it, or there's a lot of traffic on it. All I ever see is cars on it. And so I'm wondering if we can just consider, you know, is it a project for mill and overlay? Probably not, but before we say we can't do it at all, because it's gonna cost too much, can we look at, as Mr. Halipaska would say, kicking the can down the road, but in the meantime, look at just getting it repaved?
I think that traffic has lessened on that road since the dance academy isn't down there anymore, and it's a State Farm Insurance Agency. That created a lot of traffic on Guy Grant. And I don't know how many cars that translates into...
It's kind of a back exit from Castle Hills West.
Yeah.
And so, so there is...
Castle Hills.
Castle Hills.
East, not north, yeah. Whatever, the one that, that unloads onto, eventually onto Guy Grant, when you go through the little smaller townhomes. So, I mean, there's traffic on it.
Yeah, I think there's enough traffic to justify...
Redoing it.
Redoing it, and definitely taking a look at it. My, my thought on, you don't see people walking, is because there are no sidewalks.
That's true.
And just like we saw in Leary Lane, you know, if, if pedestrians are gonna use sidewalks if you build them, one of the reasons you may not see them is that I wouldn't let my kid walk out there.
Right.
Uh, no chance.
If you...
You put a sidewalk in, now, now we may have some, you know, open up some, some foot traffic.
And kids do, and kids do go down that street. If you go when Chandler gets out, you'll watch them walk along the fence above the deep ditch, which I'm waiting for some poor child to fall in that deep ditch, break his leg, and then we'll actually put a sidewalk in there. But, and then they walk from the junior high, they walk in the ditch the other way, they walk home. There's still a lot of traffic there, because everybody goes to Howell, to take their kids, and to the other elementary school. There's a lot of traffic on Guy Grant. I'd be curious, I think we did a traffic study not too long ago, and there was a lot of cars on, on Guy Grant. I understand, just wanting to do the road, but it needs someplace for the kids to walk, even if it's a sidewalk against the fence up above.
And then it's a question, does it have to be a sidewalk on both sides?
No, it doesn't. It just needs to be a sidewalk by the fence side, I would think. In fact, that would be the best.
And that, you know, but...
You don't need a sidewalk on the other side.
But, and I understand the city wanting to design it in a way that it's gonna be perfect for all time, and get it done with. But I'm looking for, more than a Band-Aid, but looking for a solution and...
You can always peel back.
Including the sidewalk.
And the only reason I bring up why it would be nice to close up the ditch and put a big sidewalk all the way down, if you look, eventually, you could go straight down and connect with the trail. Sit down on Ben Jordan, which would be nice. You could have a trail that went all the way, almost through the whole city. So it's something, and that's why I've always thought we should look at trail grants and other grants besides just fixing the road. Because now, they say that they don't want to do that, because it's basically, we're, we're covering up the ditch, it's not the trail that costs, it's putting the pipes for all that. But to me, eventually, that road would go down to Ben Jordan, would alleviate traffic.
I don't think it can anymore.
Yeah.
I don't think it can anymore, can it?
Yeah, it can, it's a straight shot.
You can cut all the way through.
It's a straight shot.
We still have to right away.
I thought that was part of the property that we sold.
No.
No.
It's the other part that's right next to it.
Okay.
And which, which also brings up, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna butcher this terribly, but there, the city is now doing another survey, I'm not sure it's the city, I think it's MPO, on active, active transportation, and active transportation means not sitting in your car. It means walking, or riding a bicycle that's maybe electric-powered, maybe not. But there are, I'm sure there's a link on the city website, I'm not sure if the, if it's active yet, or if it's coming up in, in May, but this is kind of a public service announcement to all of you. And it's looking, it's gonna be looking at the trails, looking at interconnectivity, and looking at how much you use it, or how much you think of it. and looking at how much you use it, or how much you think other folks would use it, so.
And the importance of this is.
In the pretty times of the.
You have to have that active transportation plan to apply for the grants, and there's a lot of grant money out there for this sort of thing right now. So if, once we have that plan, that's more grant money we can look forward to, which would be great.
And the surveys out of our Department of Development Services, so Maggie, Bejewon, and Julie are the lead staff for the active transportation plan. So we encourage citizens to go online and complete the survey. And actually, I did it this week, did that the survey. So I think it's victoria tx.gov backslash active transportation master plan, ATMP.
I'd also like to bring one other thing, I'd like to thank Ken. I went and got a tour of where they make the signs, and how the signals work, because I've always had this, there's a signal in town that I've wanted to shoot or chop down, because every time I come to it, it turns red. And so I wondered to know how they worked, and I got a great tour, and if you're really, you should go just to see it. But the other thing is, and this isn't even discussed in CIP, but they do have stuff, signals eventually that you can get, will automatically work out the timing. Right now, we have to do a study to do, figure out the timing, and a study will be done eventually, but if we invested in these signals down the road, they automatically adjust the timing, and you never have to do a study the rest of your, while you have that. So there's a lot of new technology coming out, but it's very interesting. I enjoyed it, and I appreciate you showing me around. Thank you.
But didn't Tech Dot agree to do a timing study again?
Yes.
On Navarro and Houston Highway, once the medians were put in? Because we had recently done one?
Yes.
Had everything timed?
We're working on getting them to help fund that, but what I'm shooting for, for the last couple of years, is those blinking left arrows that is on Morning Glory, and on Palm, and on Azalea. That's the new MUTCD.
Free to the problem.
Safety left turn. Well, I'd love to get that all the way on Navarro, and all the way on Rio Grande. Our traffic cabinets are not that good to accept that, but if I'm working with Tech Dot, every time we have our traffic management team meeting, ask them, please try to find a way to fund that project, change all the cabinets, put those arrows in, and there's our timing study.
They can take the money from the Main Street sidewalk program and use that.
So we just actually had a scoping meeting for BRICS today with Tech Dot, and we're getting some carbon reduction funding that we have to have programmed for the next four years. And so Tech Dot's looking to see if we can use that to replace signals, which, if we replace them, there'll be these new upgraded signals that kind of negate the need for timing studies. And if we can't, we're trying to get a chunk of our signals with using that carbon reduction funding, and then the rest of the signals, we're going to try and build into our next MTP.
Okay.
Has the cabinet technology changed so that they don't have to be so big, that they can be reduced in size?
I don't know what they look like, we don't have any in town. They're expensive.
Right now, they're 72 inches tall. We're going to lower those, because right now, the batteries are inside the cabinet, not a good idea, you don't want that sulfide leaching out of the batteries, and all the wiring. Shorter cabinet, same size, width, all of that depth, batteries, separate box outside, so they'll be a little shorter. But they got to be that big. It's, it's amazing, Mark saw what's inside those cabinets, it's everything you can think of, and a sink.
Well, that'll be something, anyway.
And by the way, they have batteries, so they last for a little while if the power goes out, but they won't last for a long period of time.
Yeah, short duration.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't last long during Harvey.
No. No.
All right, well, thank y'all. Thank you, Mike, for, thank you, filling in today. Thank you, Ken, for all the studies that you presented today, or had presented today.[1788.84]